For every tear a smile, for every care a promise and a blessing in its trial, for every problem life sends a faithful friend to share.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Mr. Hollister.
Here.
Mr. Olsoner.
Here.
Mr. Gersi.
He's excused.
Mrs. Fiorella.
Here.
Mr. Gadenzi.
Present.
Mr. Lindau.
Here.
Mr. McDonough.
Present.
Mrs. Pliss.
Here.
Mr. Pudnay.
Here.
Dr. Lucoe.
Here.
Mr. Sheehan.
Here.
Ms. Emmett is here. Dr. Barrett.
Here.
Mrs. Donahue.
Here.
Ms. Felizki.
Here.
Mrs. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Gregorski.
Here.
Mrs. Olsoner.
Here.
Mrs. Corelli.
She's excused.
Mrs. LaRosa.
Here.
Mrs. Gregory.
Here.
Mrs. Lepjack.
Here.
Mr. Hollister, you have eight board members present.
Thank you. On the agenda, item five, do we have a motion?
I make a motion that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the re-scheduled regular board meeting and adoption of the 2015-2016 preliminary budget on February 18, 2012.
I'll second. The motion has been made and seconded. Are there any questions or comments?
I have revision. Your E-rate funding application, I believe Mr. Pudnay can verify that he was the no vote and I was not.
Any other corrections or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Any abstaining? The ayes have it, the minutes are approved as amended. Item six, do we have a motion?
I make a motion that the Board accept a Treasury report for the general account and the food service account.
I'll second it.
The motion has been made and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
Any abstaining? The ayes have it, by a vote of seven yes and one no, Mr. Gadenzi voting no. Item seven, do we have a motion?
I make a motion that the Board approve all of the bills for the general account and the food service account.
I'll second it.
The motion has been made and seconded. Are there any questions or comments?
I just have a comment. Did Mr. Gersi review these bills? Are we aware?
He did. He was in last week and he went through all of the bills.
Are there any other questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
Any abstaining? The ayes have it, by a vote of seven yes and one no, with Mr. Gadenzi voting no. Are there any questions regarding the accounting of taxes? Dr. Barrett, I believe we have student recognition at this time?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Tonight we have several students. The first group of students have achieved the principal's list. The principal's list, in order to achieve the principal's list, students must have the highest and the second highest GPAs in their respective classes. Starting in ninth grade, we have Talia Alpo having the highest GPA. And the second is Mallory Jablak. In 10th grade, we have Kelly DeVito and Benjamin Field. In 11th grade, we have Alexandra Massimillo and Elena Legner. And in 12th grade, we have Lila Fairclough and Timothy Leschinsky. Thank you. Somewhere unable to attend due to weather, we apologize. We'd also like to recognize three outstanding seniors tonight. First, we have Rachel Carmody. Rachel is a daughter of William and Colleen Carmody of Waymore.
My name is Rachel Carmody. I would like to thank the Board of Education and Mr. Barrett for inviting me here tonight to recognize my four years of high school here at Western Wayne. I would also like to thank my parents and sisters for the endless support and guidance they have given me. Over the past four years, I have taken eight honors classes, including both math and chemistry, and five AP classes in preparation for my science career path. I've maintained my grade line average, proudly earning a spot in the top 10 percent of the very intelligent senior class. I would especially like to thank Mrs. Flotter for encouraging me through my AP Biology and Anatomy classes. She is a great role model and a very compassionate teacher. I have had many opportunities to grow outside of the classroom, including my extracurricular activities. I have served as president of the varsity club for two years, a three-year member of both the National Honor Society and SAD. While involved in TSA, I served as sergeant-at-arms and qualified for state competition two years in biomedical technology, and was able to attend the TSA state conference. I proudly represented Western Wayne School District at the Holden Leadership Conference at Shippensburg University as a sophomore. And each summer, I have traveled and played AU basketball as a member of both the NEPA Flames and JV Hoops teams. Aside from school, I have enjoyed helping my community, a four-year Wayne County Commissioners' Basketball Camp instructor and coach, Steen Town Marathon and Food Pantry volunteer, two year participant in the Calisland Community Movement, Friends of the Poor, and a member of St. Mary's Church in Lemar. I am also a certified lifeguard for Lock Springs. Not only has education, clubs, and volunteering shaped my life here at Western Wayne, but participation in sports has played a huge role. I have been a four-year member and a letter winner on both the basketball and softball teams. For basketball, I have received two MVPs and five all-tournament team awards, a sportsmanship award and first-team Lockawanna League All-Star. Served as team captain for two years and most recently attained my goal of 1,000 points. I would like to thank Coach Kloss and Coach Butler for shaping me as a player and for your dedication to our team. We achieved notable goals this year and are so proud of our efforts. Thanks to the community for filling our dinner many nights and cheering us on to beat those neighboring schools. Thank you, Western Wayne, for supporting our teams and allowing us to compete. It has helped me with friendships, goals, and time management. I've recently been recently accepted into the doctorate program at Miss Concordia University, where I will study physical therapy for six years and continue my career as a basketball player. Western Wayne is a great place, is prepared to move off. Thank you.
Next, we have Kylie Clark. Kylie is the daughter of Stephen Laurel Clark of South Canaan.
My name is Kylie Clark, and I would like to thank the Board of Education for inviting me here to recognize my talent at Western Wayne. I would also like to thank my parents, teachers, peers, coaches, and teammates for their support and guidance that has allowed my high school experience to be so fulfilling. During my years at the high school, I've been fortunate to be challenged beyond my expectations in the classroom. I've been given the opportunity to take many honors and AP courses that have expanded my knowledge in all subject areas. My main focus throughout high school was to take as many science courses as possible because science is what I hope to focus on in my future education and career. I completed AP Biology as a sophomore, AP Chemistry as a junior, and am currently taking AP Physics too and Anatomy as a senior. I'm greatly appreciative of the Science Department that has allowed me to excel and gain interest in science throughout my years, which has reinforced my desire to continue further my education and career with a focus on science and medicine. Western Wayne has given me the opportunity to be involved in many organizations and school activities. I've been a member of Future Business Leaders of America, where I was able to build a greater grasp on public speaking. I'm also gracious to have the chance to have competed in place at regional and national competitions. I've also participated in the Technology Student Association competing in biotechnology design and placing both regional and state competitions. Other organizations that I've been involved in include SAD, Science Olympia, the Women's Engineering Amazing Race Team, and the National Honor Society. I've been given many volunteer opportunities, including holding and coaching basketball commissioners camps, helping out at Sandberg Shopping Elementary Schools, and participating with the National Honor Society in community service. Throughout high school, I've also been given the opportunity to volunteer in my church community. I've served in the nursery, assisted in vacation Bible school, and have taught younger kids at our junior church. I've also been able to give, I've also been given the opportunity to compete in sports during my time at Western Wayne. I've been a four-year member of the girls' basketball team, and I am able to serve as one of the team captains this year on the team. I was fortunate to have been around this team for the past years, but this year I'm especially grateful to have been part of the history that remains. Outside of school, I've been involved in recreational basketball league, as part of the NEPA Flames, college expedition basketball team, which has allowed me to travel across the state and be scattered by college recruits. Being a part of the organizations and activities the school has offered me has allowed the community to build my character and become the person that I am today, something that gratitude cannot be expressed out. After graduation, I plan on continuing my education in biology at Clearwater Christian College, and after earning a bachelor's degree in biology, my future plans include attending a medical school and eventually becoming an oncologist. I would like to thank you for your time.
And last but certainly not least, we have Rebecca Carmody. Rebecca is also the daughter of William and Colleen Carmody of Waymore.
Good evening. My name is Rebecca Carmody. On behalf of the school board and Dr. Barrett, I want to thank you for recognizing my accomplishments as a senior, and also to thank my parents and my sisters for the endless support and love throughout my career here at Western Wayne. Throughout my four years here at Western Wayne, I've taken an abundance of challenging courses, including five AP classes and nine honors classes. Some of the most challenging ones in particular are the sciences, chemistry, and biology, and also the higher-level math. These past few years, I've really enjoyed the different math courses I've taken. Mrs. Carey is an excellent teacher, and she really has expanded my views and knowledge of math. Beginning my freshman year through now, I have been involved in SAD, NAHHS, TSA, and varsity club member. While a part of TSA, my team managed to win regionals twice and become a state finals two years ago. Outside of my school, I volunteer my time as a basketball counselor, and I also been a part of Friends of the Poor organization. I volunteer at Wokupuk Ranches, the Steen Town Marathon, and I've been a member of St. Mary's Church. And each summer, I play and travel AU basketball with both NEPA Flames and JV Hoops. Having said all that, my most success and passion is shown throughout each and every one of my games and meets I have participated in. Having sports in my life has made me the person I am today. I have competed in volleyball, basketball, and track at the varsity level all four years. In volleyball, I've managed to be selected for three years first-team All-Star, two-year All-Regent Team, and in 2013, I was named MVP of the league. I also set the record here at Western Wayne in kills and digs. In basketball, I was named two-year first-team All-Star and most recently scored my 1,000th point. I was selected all-tournament team and MVP for multiple tournaments. This past season, we went 17-7, a record that hasn't been seen in years. We accomplished many goals, including winning a home playoff game. The season ended second round, not what we planned, but we were blessed with all the support from the community administration, believing that we could achieve what we did. And in track, I was three-year first-team All-Star, two-year All-Regent Team, and I acquired a multitude of district medals and top performances. I couldn't have accomplished as much as I have without all my coaches, Coach Thorpe, Coach Collins, Coach Kloss, and Coach Butler, offering support and always being there when I needed. A little side note, not only have I had a successful athletic career here, but being involved in sports has given me friendships and respect from others around the area, which I am so blessed to have. To wrap it all up, because of my heart, work, passion, and determination, I received a full scholarship to play basketball at Bigington University. My major at this point is bouncing back and forth between many, but I will hope to one day earn my MBA and be successful. Once again, thank you for inviting me here and thank you for supporting me as a student athlete. I would not want to represent any other school. Continue to support and honor those who make the best out of Western Wayne because one little appreciation can go so far.
Well, to all of our students that we recognize here tonight, we certainly wish you the best. You've made quite an impression on us here at Western Wayne, and we know you'll do great things out there, so good luck, everyone. Do we have anyone from the audience that would care to address the board at this time?
Yes, please. As we're going through the budget process, I know that the board commits huge amounts of time to gathering important information, that you're very careful to hear as much as you can about the different programs that we're considering. I would like to present Mrs. Kay Johnson as a person who has worked in the Western Wayne pre-K program for 13 years and has very important information, I think, as a community that we need to know to the benefit that the pre-K program produces for each and every student. Each and every student, not students of athletic or different abilities, just every student. So I think that this would be a very good opportunity.
Okay, Amy. That's...
She's my mother, so she's allowed to yell.
And I brought a cheat sheet because I'm not accustomed to speaking in public anymore. So I'll tell you a little bit about myself so that you know I'm qualified, that I am qualified to make some of these decisions about pre-K. I've worked at the Wilson School in pre-K as a teacher's aide for 13 years. I am not a teacher. I did not have a degree. However, I do have an educational background. I attended East Charlesburg University when it was just a state college as an English and speech major, and dropped out with one history course and my student teaching to go to get married, which I always thought I'd get back to it, but I never did. My husband worked for the FAA for 30 years. Twenty of these years, we spent moving up and down the East Coast and parts of the Midwest. Our three children were moved from one school system to another, and our selection of a home every place we moved was totally involved on the quality of the schools in the area. The one school in Connecticut was a Montessori school, and I helped out there. I helped in schools with all different qual, all different, all different systems. And when I began my job here at the Wilson School as a teacher's aide, I was blown away by the intelligence and the talents and the enthusiasm that these little four-year-olds had. Their minds are like little sponges. They just, they just blew me away. And I was also impressed by the diversity of the kids. They came from all educational and economic backgrounds. It didn't seem to make a bit of difference in how enthusiastic and how bright they were. So I made a list of a few things that happens in a pre-K kindergarten, and I did this. It probably sounds like a really boring list, but I did this because I figured everything that kids learn in pre-K, they already know, so when they get ready to go to kindergarten, they just jump right in. They don't have to learn all these little things that the kids learn in pre-K. They're ready to sit down and get to work. And so, the first thing, they have to know that school is fun. It's not just all work, school is fun. They learn how to do things like hang their coat up, not throw it on the floor. That seems silly, right? But when you get 20, 25 kids, they don't know how to hang their coat up. There you go. And they learn there's never any hitting, there's never any, any mean words. They learn how to identify all the letters, upper and lower cases, and how to produce the sound that they make. All of this in pre-K. They can print their names using upper and lowercase letters, count to 100, hold a pencil correctly, learn to rhyme simple, familiar words, identify colors, follow directions, express themselves with pictures and with words, paint using all the primary colors, and they know enough to not mix the colors together, so they end up with black and brown. They have to learn to rinse their brush out and, and paint nicely like that. They learn how to line up quietly, no talking or shoving, to sit quietly, listen to a story, and then discuss it. How to raise your hand when it's your turn to speak. They make new friends. They learn how to socialize. They learn mommy and daddy's real names, that they have names other than mommy and daddy. They know where they live, whether it's South Canaan or Waymore or whatever. They learn how to trust grownups in the room, that they have to learn how to trust grownups other than mommy and daddy. And they have lots and lots of puddle puzzles of all different, different degrees of hardness. They learn how to plant seeds, make them grow. They know how, they can tell a grownup in the room if you're afraid or frightened or, or they have a problem. They learn to be familiar with the building. They know where the cafeteria is, how it works. They know where the office is, where the nurse's station is. And by the end of pre-K, many of these children can even read. So I think pre-K is a great time to pick up on learning disabilities and abusive situations at home that nobody seems to notice. I've had little kids with problems whisper in my ear things that would curl your hair, and nobody else knew. But they have to have somebody that they can talk to, and a, and a four-year-old is much more likely to tell that than a five-year-old or a six-year-old. If we're a small school, we have abundant of fantastic minds and talents in music and art and science. And I think you should do whatever you have to do to keep this pre-K going, because I think it's necessary. Please don't throw out the babies with the bath water.
Thank you, Mrs. Johnson.
You're welcome.
Do we have anyone else that would care to address the board at this time? Hearing none. Item 11, the enrollment report is provided through information. We'll move to page three, item 12. Do we have a motion?
I recommend that the Board of Education approve the 2015-2016 district calendar. Do you want to add an option to it?
Option two, Dr. Michael.
I'll second that.
The motion has been made and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
Any abstaining? For clarification, we had a couple no votes. How many? Two. We have two no votes. Motion passes by a vote of six, two, no votes being Mr. Pudnay and Mr. Gadenzi. Item 13, do we have a motion?
I recommend that the Board of Education approve the listed early dismissal dates for students in order to conduct ACT-80 activities with the professional staff. September 23rd, October 30th, November 11th, January 18th, February 12th, and I believe March 9th.
I'll second. I have Mr. Olsoner seconding that motion. The motion has been made and seconded. Again, this is for option two, as previously approved on item 12. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
Any abstaining? The motion passes by a vote of seven yes and one no, that being Mr. Pudnay. Item 14, do we have a motion?
I recommend the Board of Education approve a real estate tax rebate in the amount of $1,456.02 on property number 22-0-0018-0128 in Salem Township. The rebate is due to a veterans tax exemption certification.
I'll second the motion. The motion has been made and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Any abstaining? The ayes have it unanimously. Item 15, do we have a motion? I recommend that the Board of Education approve the NEIU number 19 budget for the 2015-2016 school year with the estimated share for Western Wayne School District at $85,698.82, noting this is no change for three years consecutive. I'll second. The motion has been made and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
Any abstaining? Have you raised your hands if you voted no? The motion fails by a vote of three yes and five no, the no votes being Mrs. Pliss, Mrs. Fiorella, Mr. Pudnay, Mr. Gadenzi, and I believe Mr. Lindau.
In regards to that vote, that only means that it was rejected by our board. The state will still send our money of $85,000 to the NEIU, and they'll just deduct it from our, our funding from the state.
Will we not get the services now, even though they'll get the money?
No.
We'll still get the services. It's just technically, we're saying we're not getting our money, and we're taking it anyway.
I think that what a lot of people, and personally me, why you vote no is because it's just kind of sending a message that we, I feel that we are so unfairly, you know, charged $85,000 compared to other schools just because of land value.
Yeah. Again, we're penalized because of the taxation system where land is...
I just want them to get the money and we don't...
Exactly, yeah. The state will...
And that, that formula is a state formula, it's not the IU's formula, just so that's clear.
We actually had a member of the IU here several years back to explain to, we explained
to them how inadequate the system was, and you can see that it hasn't been changed since, so.
Then again, it's a state system.
It's the state, actually, yeah.
Unfortunately. Item 16, do we have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education prioritize the participation of Western Wayne School District in the joint purchasing of copy paper and number two fuel oil through the NEIU eighteen.
I'll second. The motion has been made and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
Any abstaining? The motion passes by a vote of seven yes and one no, that being Mr. Gadenzi. Item 17, do we have a motion?
I recommend the Board of Education approve an agreement with WVIA Public Television and Radio for V media program at Level 2 for $1,425 per year for the 15, 16, 16, 17, and 17, 18 school years.
I'll second it.
The motion has been made and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Any abstaining? The ayes have it unanimously. Item 18, do we have a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Education approve the following new transportation contract as state formula for the 2014-15 school year. Sarah Wasman, van number 126, Lake Ariel to Western Wayne High School and Western Wayne Middle School, effective February 9th, 2015.
I'll second it.
The motion has been made and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Any abstaining? The ayes have it unanimously. Item 19, do we have a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Education accept Cindy Ziegler as the Sterling Township Act Collector, appointment of Deborah Bromer as the Deputy Tax Collector for Sterling Township during the term of January 1st, 2014 through December 31st, 2017.
I'll second. The motion has been made and seconded. Are there any questions or comments?
I just have a comment that, you know, we're voting on this, but we really have nothing to do with it because the tax collector, known tax collector, or I should say, present tax collector is the one who makes the choice, so it doesn't matter what we say, yes or
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Any abstaining? The ayes have it unanimously. Item 20A, please.
I recommend that the Board of Education approve the following personnel to be added to the district substitute list for the 2014-2015 school year per certifications, Acts 2334, 151, 114, 153, 168 guidelines, employment eligibility verification, and the U.S. Department of Justice. Number one, Christopher Ortiz, Area of Certification, Early Childhood Special Education, and Suzette Bayes.
Basil, area secretary, teacher aide, cafeteria and custodian.
I'll second it.
The motion has been made and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Any abstaining? The ayes have it unanimously. Item 20B, please.
I recommend that the Board of Education approve the resignation of Misty Toot, effective February 27th, 2015.
I'll second the motion. The motion has been made and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Any abstaining? The ayes have it unanimously. Item 20C, please.
I move that the Board of Education approve the resignation of Abigail Forrest, effective upon release.
Second. The motion's been made and seconded. Are there any questions or comments?
Do we have an anticipated date?
60 days from roughly today.
It is 60 days.
Are there any other questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Any abstaining? The ayes have it unanimously. Item 20D, please.
I recommend the Board of Education approve the resignation for retirement purposes of Susan Shemansky, tentatively effective April 20th, 2015, with regrets.
I'll second the motion. The motion has been made and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Any abstaining? The ayes have it unanimously. Item 20E, please.
I recommend the Board of Education approve the following volunteers, Charles Bailey, Van, Christopher Peterson, Watson Baseball.
I'll second the motion. The motion has been made and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Any abstaining? The ayes have it unanimously. Item 21 are informational items under important dates. We have Read Across America, which was scheduled for today, will have to be rescheduled due to the snow day. Dangers of social media presentation will be March 12th at 7:00 PM in the high school. Wayne County Heroin Prevention Task Meeting, Task Force Meeting, I guess, will be March 19th at 7:00 PM in the high school. Robert D. Wilson Science Fair will be held March 26th at Robert D. Wilson from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Pre-kindergarten and kindergarten, pending program availability. Registration will be held the week of March 23rd in Robert D. Wilson and Evergreen Elementary Schools. We will have a student teacher with us from Baptist Bible College. Morgan Jones will be at Evergreen Elementary with Jill Butler in February. Do we have any correspondence at this time?
No, Mr. President.
Are there any questions regarding the superintendent's report? Assistant superintendent's report? Principal's report? Federal programs?
No, Mr. President.
Thank you. Have any of the board members any further business?
Can I interrupt you for a minute?
Who?
Robert. Another business, is there, does the board have any communication to the public on the shooting that occurred?
No.
None whatsoever?
None. The board has received, of course, the district attorney's report and we will meet an executive session regarding that after this meeting tonight. Okay.
On the same question, Superintendent Lico declined to say if similar suspension would be lifted citing matters of personnel issue, okay? I want to, I want to reflect to, all right, and this, the board tonight has mentioned safety numerous times, especially where schools canceled today, okay? If safety is such a paramount issue, okay? And I referred to the weapon that was used, Glock 21, okay, 45 ACP. And I just want to read just the cautionary, which is with, that is, the pamphlet that is given with all pistols, rifles, et cetera. This firearm, like most modern revolvers or auto loaders, pistols, designed without an external manual safety. Therefore, it should be considered as loaded and ready to fire unless first the magazine has been removed and then the chamber checked and verified as empty and loaded. The other thing I want to refer to is the way dependent on February 27th, okay, and district attorney's, her investigation where there wasn't a criminal act, but one thing I want to refer to here is that authorities said Officer Paul Semler was cleaning his gun during working hours on February 18th when Iran was discharged, penetrating his desk and lodging into concrete floor. Okay, that was about the extent of the report. Is the board aware of what they call, what could be danger inflicted, okay, by a round, not penetrating the concrete floor, but one that is ricocheting around, going through walls and through people, okay? It's called collateral damage, okay? Now, yeah, as many people said and agreed, yeah, it is fortunate that no one was injured. But this is a very grievous incident, one that from a safety standpoint should have never happened. Like I said, I brought this along because there's numerous, there's numerous reflections on how to handle the weapon and how to clean it. And this, this was a very dangerous situation that could have been dead wrong. And that's why I want to address it and that's why my concern is, you mentioned safety, okay, and we cancel school, we do everything to be safe, whether it be sports or outside, you know, what's the precedent set here? It's going to be very grievous for other schools.
We're going into an executive session and we will be talking about looking at revising our policy in regards to cleaning a weapon in school. That is one of the...
No, we're, we're going into executive session. We have no other comment. Obviously, we agree with your comments, but as you know, Mr. Semler is suspended at this time. We will decide just what further action has to be taken. So that is under consideration and we will, for the first time, review it tonight as a board in executive session. That's our comment.
I have one other question. Will there be an expert, okay, in firearm safety to be consulted before you make your decision? Or are you going to do it on your own?
We will rely on the feedback that we have received from the district attorney's office at this time. We, if we have to bring someone else to create a policy, we will. We certainly don't appreciate what happened. We know that it was a very, very dangerous situation and we will address it accordingly. Thank you.
I have one more question. Officer Semler, is it true that he is a retired Pennsylvania State Police officer?
Yes. Joe?
On that same subject, is it, that's not a mandate to have an armed officer in school, is it?
No.
Then why would you go and even consider bringing one back again? That was put in place because of an incident took place a couple of years back.
Point of discussion and that's something we will be considering.
Because it is a back cost and as a cost, it could have been very disastrous. That was like paying someone who committed school with a gun.
Thank you. You're welcome. Any of the board members, any further business?
I'd like to congratulate our wrestlers that did very well on regionals and to Cole Fuller, who was the first freshman at Western Wayne, to be able to qualify for the state tournament in her shoe. So kudos to Dante Terenzio and his program that he has here at Western Wayne and the hard work of those five individuals that made it to regionals as well as the rest of the team and to our girls' basketball team for having a great year, even though it ended not how anyone would want it to. So I think that we finished off the winner's boards very well and I want to congratulate all the student athletes here at Western Wayne for a good job and a good season.
Thank you. Our meeting schedule listed, future meetings, as mentioned, we will go into executive session this evening for personnel matters. On April 8th at 6:00 PM, our next board committee meeting will be held here in the district boardroom. On April 13th is our next public meeting here in the boardroom at 7:00 PM. April 22nd at 6:00 PM, a special meeting for the presentation of the narrative budget will be held and that will be here in the district boardroom. Our meeting's held recently, February 18th at 6:00 PM. Rescheduled monthly board meeting and adoption of the preliminary budget was held here in the district boardroom. Also, February 18th, an executive session was held for legal and personnel matters here in the district boardroom. And on February 24th at 6:30 PM, a board committee meeting was held for negotiations with the Western Wayne Education Association and that was here in the district boardroom. Hearing no other business, do we have a motion for adjournment? Motion been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Any abstaining? Thank you, we are adjourned.